Hello, everyone, and welcome to the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. Can we get, uh, well, first, let me say, anyone who li- would like to speak in the public hearing portion, please sign up on the sheet in the back of the room. And can we get the clerk to call a roll, please?
Chair Bochart.
Here.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Com- Commissioner Mayo.
Excused.
Commissioner calling. Here, Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Excused.
And Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Okay, so we have enough people here that we are gonna have everyone in attendance voting tonight. And I would like to announce that, um, uh, let's see, this is a little confusing. So I guess what we'll do is go ahead and, um, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the August twenty-second meeting.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And do we need a roll call on that? Nope. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. And Madam Clerk, do you wish to announce the agenda items, or should I do that?
You can go ahead and announce the agenda.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item three A, a public hearing and recommendation on a rezoning, a preliminary development plan, and an official development plan for Orchard Estates subdivision planned unit development. The public meeting is hereby open, and we have Jacob Caza to begin a presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Caza. I am a senior planner with the city's planning division. I'm just gonna pause till Abby gets it on the screen there. There we go. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published from the Westminster window, the mail notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to six hundred and fifteen property owners and addresses, and five HOAs within one thousand feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of the Orchard Estates property. The parcel is outlined in red. The parcel is located at thirty-seven-hundred West one-hundred-and-fourth Avenue. On this slide, you can see the proposed rezoning from O-one to PUD. You will notice that all of the surrounding properties are already zoned PUD. PUD zoning is required for any property over two acres in size that is seeking to rezone. The preliminary development plan and official development plan would facilitate the subdivision of the property into nineteen single-family home lots. Eighteen of those lots will be for custom single-family homes. The existing home would remain on a new lot. The vehicu- excuse me. The vehicular access point for the development will be on West one-hundred-and-third Avenue. The plan also includes an HOA-owned detention pond and private park. Section eleven-five-fourteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains ten criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and preliminary development plans. Staff finds that the preliminary development plan generally meet these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private development in the surrounding area. Streets, drives, access points, and turning movements are designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future public land dedications. For those select, selected example criteria, staff finds that the PDP is compatible with existing developments in the surrounding area, that the access point is designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future land dedications. Section eleven-five-fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains sixteen criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the plan exhibits sound, creative, or efficient planning and design principles. The architectural design of the structure is compatible in terms of shape, color, forms, and material, and existing streets are suitable to carry the traffic. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the ODP exhibits sound planning by allowing for sensible infill development, that the ODP includes specific design standards regarding architecture for the custom homes, and that the surrounding road network can accommodate the additional one-hundred-and-seventy-nine daily trips generated by the development. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend that city council approve the rezoning, PDP, and ODP. Staff finds that a recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priority of ensure that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities and activities for residents, businesses, and visitors that honor the city's history and support the arts, parks, recreation, open spaces, and libraries is met by facilitating infill development within the city. This applicant, the applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention, and we can also answer questions when you're ready.
Thank you. Whenever the applicant is ready.
Good evening, Commissioner and Planning Commission members. Thank you for your time. My name is Sean Krieger. I'm a civil engineer for DCI Engineering, and will be presenting the Orchard Estates rezoning preliminary and official development plans, which we are respectfully seeking your recommendation for approval. I'm also here with Lloyd Donnelly and Chuck Hague, the owner developers, who will also be available for any questions you may have at the conclusion of the presentation. Next slide. Tonight, I have a short presentation which will include, as Jake already went over, the site location, the subdivision design overview, requested PUD exceptions, and then questions and comments. The project, as Jake, Jacob said, is at thirty-seven-hundred West one-hundred-and-fourth. The parcel of land is approximately a half-mile east of Sheridan Boulevard on one-hundred-and-fourth Avenue. The site is currently occupied by an existing two-story house with an attached garage. There is an in-ground swimming pool with a pool house to the south of the existing house. Along the north property line to the left in this slide is one-hundred-and-fourth. One-hundred-and-third Avenue is along the southern property line, and the Windings subdivision is to the east and west. The site is currently covered in native grass. It also has large evergreen and deciduous trees around the house and along the perimeter of the property. There is an existing asphalt drive and drive cut in one-hundred-and-fourth to the existing house. The proposed development consists of two parcels that total seven-point-seven acres. We are seeking recommend, recommendation of approval to rezone the parcels from O-one Open District to PUD planned unit development. We are also proposing new PDP and ODPs for the, the parcels. The project will be subdivided into nineteen lots. The lot sizes will range from ten-thousand-two-hundred to seventeen-thousand square feet, which is slightly larger than the surrounding developments. Improvements to the sidewalk along one-hundred-and-fourth to meet the bicycle ma- master plan is also included in this project. We will be removing the two existing drive cuts in one-hundred-and-fourth. The centrally-located private park area exceeds the required four percent of the total property. The dedicated area is six percent of the property. The larger park provides an enhanced community space with a basketball half-court, pedestrian pathway, and park benches. The park also provides an emergency access drive, which will be explained later in the presentation. The PDP and ODP propose a single access point onto one-hundred-and-third Avenue. A ten-foot-wide pedestrian walk between lots six and seven will also be provided to connect pedestrians to one-hundred-and-fourth Avenue. Once the streets and the utilities are built, sorry, Jacob, move on. There we go. Um, once the streets and utilities are built, each lot will be sold individually. The custom or semi-custom homes will be required to meet city requirements for the zoning and will be built within the dedicated setbacks. Excellent. Along with the standard city requirements for each home, there will be additional design features required. Half of the new homes are required to have side or rear-loaded garages along with fifty square feet of additional storage. Each home must have a functioning porch and patio. All new homes will be prewired for solar systems. Garages will be prewired for future electric vehicle charging systems, and ten percent of the garages will be required to include the electric vehicle charging systems. Next slide. While planning the project, our intent was to create a subdivision that looked and felt as though it was part of the original Windings subdivision. As a result of this effort and the size of the project, some of the current design standards were unattainable. We are asking for eight PUD exceptions. The city requires three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen design elective points. Many of the design elective points were developed for much larger projects and greatly improved those projects. Unfortunately, for many of the electives would be too cumbersome with no appealing or functional effects added to our project. We have proposed twenty-seven-hundred elective points. This is eighty-four percent of the required points. After meticulously working through the available electives with the city planner, we have employed electives that would provide an enhancing element or add an aesthetic quality beyond the standard design. A proposed entrance to the project has been designed without the city-required landscaped island. Due to the required water main loop through the subdivision, Public Works and Utility does not support an island where two water mains will be entering and leaving through the entrance. The plans do not provide shade trees in the tree lawn behind the attached walks. The proposed street scape matches the neighboring streets. The resulting tree lawn behind the attached sidewalk is a little more than three-and-a-half feet, which is not wide enough for the trees. Sticking, uh, next slide. Sticking with the theme of blending in with the neighboring subdivision, we propose eighty-foot diameter cul-de-sacs. The city standard is now ninety-six diameter cul-de-sacs to accommodate for the newer and larger fire apparatus. In order to conform to these larger fire trucks, we have provided a twenty-foot-wide emergency access through the park connecting the two cul-de-sacs, which will give the fire trucks unobstructed access throughout the site. Our plans are proposing a sixty-foot setback from one-hundred-and-fourth right-of-way. The current city standard is a hundred-foot setback. The existing homes along one-hundred-and-fourth from Sheridan to Lowell were built to the sixty-foot setback. We are matching those existing setbacks along one-hundred-and-fourth. We are asking for the exception to the standard a hundred-foot setback and a six-foot tall berm with a six-foot fence within the setback. To blend with the adjacent properties, we have provided a landscape area that does not have the six-foot-high berm, but will neatly continue the same landscaping along one-hundred-and-fourth. A new six-foot fence will also be installed in this setback. Next slide. We also request exception to the required detached walks with a six-foot-wide tree line in a fifty-seven-foot-wide right-of-way street section. The adjoining fifty-three-foot-wide street sections have attached walks in the neighboring subdivisions without a six-foot-wide tree lawn. Our proposed design includes a fifty-three-foot-wide right-of-way with a three-and-a-half-foot landscaping strip behind the attached walks. We are also proposing a modified forty-five-foot-wide street section with parking on one side of the street for a short distance along Osceola Street. And this concludes our presentation. We appreciate your time and would respectfully ask for your recommendation for approval for this site. And again, we'll be available for any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner calling.
Um, yes, I have a question about, in that open space that runs, um, to connecting the two cul-de-sacs, it's labeled as pickleball, basketball, half-court. Talk to me about that, because pickleball, I love pickleball, but, um, that's really close to those homes. Have you considered the concerns associated with the noise in pickleball?
I think, I think we ultimately, um, the pickleball was, um, a, a pre-design before that emergency access. And, um, it was there, it made sense, uh, before that access. Um, it doesn't make as much sense now, and I think unfortunately that may be a leftover, uh, label. Uh, our intent was, um, probably not to do the pickleball just because, uh, of that emergency access now.
So it's an emergency access, not any kind of a court, sports court?
Well, we will have a, a basketball half-court design there. Our landscape plans show it better.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking at the landscape plan. Um, and then my other question was, so there's a few lots that run along one-hundred-and-third Avenue. Um, lots nineteen and eighteen and seventeen specifically. Are those homes, the front doors facing one-hundred-and-third circle and backing onto one-hundred-and-third court? Is that accurate? Maybe, um, Jacob can answer that.
Yes, it is.
He's looking at a plan. Um, just because it looks like, so see nineteen, eighteen, and seventeen, do those, um, with, have front doors that are to the north and then backyards that are to the south?
That's correct.
So is there a privacy fence that runs along one-hundred-and-third Avenue for those homes then?
There will be, yes.
And, and how, is that consistent with the neighborhood adjacent? Um, like for instance, I can't tell what's happening on to the west or to the east within the existing community. Do they have?
I believe those also have privacy fences, yes.
Oh, it looks like they do.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my last question, I'm sorry. Um, there was something that you said about fifty percent of the homes would have garages that are side or rear-loaded. Usually rear-loaded is when you have alleys, and I don't see any alleys here. So what do you mean by that?
Um, I, well, it's mostly.
Side-loaded.
Yes.
So fifty percent will be side-loaded?
Correct.
Okay.
We had either met, uh, one or the other. It was, but it, in our case, it'll, it'd definitely be side-loaded.
I'm just gonna come and join you, but, yeah, in the case of some of the larger, wider lots, there may be not so your traditional rear-loaded, but they could pull around from the front to the rear, so it, it could be.
Yes.
You need to say.
Yes, you need to state your name, please.
Oh, I'm Chuck Hague with, uh, the Orson Group.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so there's a potential for, again, on some of the larger lots to have the rear access to the garage, but you're correct. It would be very limited. There's, there's only probably three or four that that would make sense on.
Okay, great. And then I think my, I said I had a last question. This is my last question. The existing home, um, I assume it's getting rid of the swimming pool and it looks like some of the features are going away. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's definitely the outbuilding to the south that would go away. Doesn't show it there, but the pool is a question mark at this time, but there's strong possibility that would be going away too. It does fit within the property boundaries.
Oh, it does?
Yes. It was laid out to accommodate that, but.
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of questions here. Uh, stick, staying around with the existing house, uh, I, not exactly sure, because right now I believe the garage is, loads to the north. Or is that house gonna get remodeled and have a new garage door on the south side?
It will get remodeled, yes. At minimum, we'd have to flip the garage door. Um, at the most, it would be maybe a new garage, maybe in addition to that home, that's yet to be figured out. But at minimum, we do have to flip that garage.
Okay, is?
Uh, access, I should say, garage door.
Yeah, is, is the current owner, are, are you still living in that house, or is that, is it?
Oh, there's a renter there now.
There's a renter there.
Yeah, the, the, the previous owner has since left, so, yeah, we didn't rent back to them or anything, but they.
I wasn't sure if it was all.
Yeah.
If they're trying to, if you were part of that group and
No, no.
there was an owner occupied as far as the development goes.
Moved out, but there's a renter that'll be leaving soon.
Okay, and as far as getting rid of the pool and those outbuildings, that was, was that the developer, uh, your decision as developers, uh, to kind of get rid of some of those outbuildings, or is that?
Yeah, for sure, the outbuilding. I mean, that's an old, it's, doesn't have any purpose in this day and age. I mean, if you, you know, have a little farm there, it made all sorts of sense, but it's mainly just a wide-open garage. That, uh, it's, you know, s- I don't even know what the ceiling heights are, six, seven feet. You know, it, it can't be utilized for anything else. The pool, possibly. It needs to be inspected. Uh, we think it's in working condition, but again, we just haven't got to that point yet. We're, we've been fighting to get through this, hopefully, and then, uh, we'll delve into all those, all those matters in, in time.
Sure, sure. That, that's fine. I, uh, so with some of the exceptions, uh, so I get as far as one-hundred-and-third and one-hundred-and-fourth, keeping the, kind of matching the windings on either side there. But, uh, why, why for the internal streets, uh, do we not use the, uh, do we not use the current standards for, for this? Since this is entirely separate, so why not the fifty-nine-foot right-of-way instead of the, what, the, are we using a forty-five-foot right-of-way through there? Is that what I'm reading? Or is it fifty-nine?
Same, same street section, but with the attached walks instead of the.
So you're just using attached walks to match the rest of the neighborhood?
Yes, correct.
And, and, uh, fifty-three-foot wide, uh, right-of-way.
It's fifty-three total versus?
Okay, 'cause I saw.
Versus fifty-seven.
All right. Okay, 'cause I saw a modified forty-five-foot-wide local attached sidewalk.
Yeah, so that's just that short stretch up Osceola.
Oh.
Up through those two, um, lots there and along the, uh, park.
That's basically just 'cause that would be to a single side parking as opposed to double, because there's so few homes in that area, the, the parking really isn't necessary, so we, we'd rather have a smaller footprint for, run off all those matters, you know?
Sure, okay, all right. Uh, yep, as far, now, I know you're not going to be doing the shade trees or you're requesting not to do the shade trees in the landscape because of the room. Has, are you, are you mitigating that somehow, uh, with landscaping plan or, and obviously trying to save some, some of the mature trees that are out there?
Yeah, I believe we've increased our minimum tree count. Yeah, I believe we've increased our minimum tree count to five.
I think so.
I think it's five as opposed to two or three. Jacob, make, maybe help me out, but yeah, so we've increased the minimum tree count for all homes to five. So there would, definitely will be trees in those areas, it's just that they won't be placed within the.
A tree line.
Yeah.
That's fair. As far as the exception regarding the eighty-foot cul-de-sacs and the, is the fire department okay with the, with, with the eighty-foot cul-de-sacs and the pri, the emergency access through the park?
They are.
One hundred percent, there was many discussions back and forth to resolve that matter, and they, they are satisfied with the, the current layout.
And they've also had us make sure that we place no parking signs at the entrance of the access and then also signs that call out the emergency access through the park.
Okay, and I think I have one more question. Yeah, one of the, one of our emailers in our packet was asking, well, they asked about the general contractor, which is probably too early being a PDP, but do you have a, a, a proposed schedule of, or an anticipated schedule on what construction?
I will tell you it'll be as soon as possible. I know once, if we get, you know, the approval and move forward, then through council, we would be ready to go on our engineered drawings and get the approval on that, but I don't know what the timeframe is on something like that, but best-case scenario, we're moving as fast as we can, as soon as approval. And of all things, we'd be ready to get started, so. It's so hard to, to guesstimate when you have winters and stuff around here, depends on your start time and everything, but within a year would be hopefully when the houses would start to be constructed from, not now, but from the time we're able to break ground on the infrastructure.
Got to hear from approvals.
Yes.
Yep, and with that water line loop, I, I assume, I was, I was looking at the utility plan. I, I didn't see any water valves in there, I assume that loop's going to be isolated between.
Definitely.
It's such a.
Yes.
I hate designing loops that are that tight, but I'm, I'm also a civil engineer.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, it'll definitely be isolated and along with, you know, isolating several hydrants throughout this site. And we've, you know, worked through all that with our, in our utility report.
And I guess, and maybe I've already said the last question, but probably one more here. The sanitary sewer I noticed coming out on the one hundred and fourth, you're adding a manhole about fifteen feet away from the existing manhole. Is that because it flows downhill to the east? Or is that, or how, I'm not, I don't know how that actually flows in there, but it, is there, is no way you could actually use that existing manhole and?
There's several things going on out there on one hundred and fourth. There's a large water transmission line. There's also a lot of storm sewer that you might not see in, in that plan. I think just for the simplistic direct path to the sewer line, we thought that would be the most efficient way to connect, as just pop in a new manhole to that sewer.
Okay, got it. I think I'm done for now, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Question? Commissioner calling.
You said last one. Twice.
I'm back to the trees. I'm back to the trees on West one hundred and third. There's several that you're keeping along that edge, those large ponderosa trees. And I'm looking at the envelopes for the buildings, they're really tight against those trees. What kind of commitment is the city putting on you to make sure you really protect those trees so that they can remain, because they do provide a really nice screen? Maybe this is a question for Jacob. For Mr. Caza.
Yes, Commissioner, so the city's landscape regulations stipulate that during construction, the developer is required to stake the drip line of the trees and not disturb the area in there. So this site has, I want to say a hundred and fifty, somewhere in that ballpark of existing trees on-site. Not all of them are very healthy or desirable species. So we have worked with them to come up with a mitigation plan which included, as they mentioned, putting additional trees on the new lots. So typically we would acquire a new lot to provide either one, two, one or two trees on their lot when they build the home, so they're going to up that to five. And then for the ones that we could save, we, we did our best to save the ones that, or late, identify the ones that could be saved for that. There's also a condition that says if any of the trees die within a certain period, they have to replace them with an equivalent tree. So that's, that'd kind of be something we just have to manage during our, our warranty period.
Sure. I am, I commend you on saving so many trees and inventorying them to make sure you're saving the healthy ones. But there's nothing like a nice mature ponderosa pine to provide a nice screening and solar benefits, especially to those lots along that southern edge. It would make me feel better if you reduced those building envelopes just to make sure that you're within the drip line, and again, the symbols on your plans may be bigger than the trees actually are. So it would just make me feel better if you pulled your building envelope, if that blue area represents your building envelope where your building could sit. That would make me feel better, that'd be better likely to save those trees. But like I said, the symbols on here may not be accurately representing the.
Yeah, Commissioner, can I interject for just a second?
Sure.
The blue of what you're seeing is just the buildable area within the setbacks, not the building envelope. So foreseeably, they might not be that large.
So it is a buildable area even though it's showing underneath those canopies?
Ju- just in the terms of setbacks, not in the term of drip line.
I see, okay. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, in that case, I would like to open the public testimony part of this hearing by asking the clerk if we had any voicemails or emails that did not make it into the packet.
There are no voicemails and all of the emails are attached to the packet.
Very good. In that case, we will begin taking public testimony. Anyone who wished to speak should have signed up in the back of the room. And Abby, do you have a sheet? Okay, we've got the sign-up sheet. I would ask that everyone limit their comments to five minutes. And if someone else has spoken what you intended to say, please just comment that it has been already stated and that you agree with the previous speaker rather than taking your full five minutes. So with that, go ahead and start the list, please, Abby.
The first speaker I have signed up is Steve Brockman.
Good evening, I'm Steve Brockman. I live at three, six, seven, five, West one hundred and second Avenue in the Highland Greens East Development. Frequently walk, walk by this lot, so we've observed it for a fair amount of time. I have a few comments related to sort of the environmental aspects of this project, but I also would like to speak briefly about some of the inclusivity concerns I have as a member of the inclusivity board of the city. I think it's my responsibility to raise some of those things, but I'm not in any official capacity from the board. This has never come up before the board. I think one of the emails addressed this, so I may be off topic, but there was really no zero-scaping requirement as part of this plan development. I'm not sure if that's in the regs at this point for the city. If not, I would encourage the plan commission to look at that because we're running out of water. Similarly, it's encouraging that the developer has included some solar aspects of the project in terms, specifically in requiring or in providing the homes with solar access through the garages for potential EVs and also wiring to accommodate solar. What struck me after that was, well, why aren't they just putting solar roofs right on this development? It's going to happen eventually anyway, why not do it when you're building what it's logically considerably cheaper? Now I'll address the inclusivity aspect of it. This might be coming out of left field, in fact, I know it's coming out of left field. Westminster has a housing challenge. Our cost of housing is high and low-to-moderate-income households have a difficult time making rent, et cetera, as part of this. From a personal perspective, I'd love it if part of any new development that came in front of the city included addressing that issue. It may not be practical in this situation because the plan, obviously, is addressing how it would fit into the existing neighborhood, and those are all single-family homes. But I think some creative developers could potentially include some moderate-income housing as part of this project which would provide more inclusivities for other residents of the community. It may provide a bit of a challenge, but one of the things I don't see anywhere in the plan is what are the potential costs of these individual homes? From the design perspective that I saw, our sample housing that was included in the presentation, these are well over a million-dollar properties. Moderate-income people can't afford that. So the last comment I had, I guess I'll jump back to environmental. The developer says this plan meets the bike requirements of the city and pedestrian, I assume as well. It's a little unclear to me what accessibility bicyclists have. I assume it's through the new lane from between lot six and seven to come off one hundred and fourth, and then it would join into one hundred and third Avenue, does that make sense? I'm not convinced that actually connects to any existing bike pathway. However, it would connect to the sidewalks. So that might be a consideration as you look down the road in terms of how the development comes into fruition. That's it for my comments, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joanne Hammer, I believe.
Thank you, I just had some concerns.
Ma'am, please go ahead and state your name and address, thank you.
Joanne Hammer, I live at forty-ten West one hundred and third Avenue in the windings.
Thank you.
My concerns are centered around traffic and traffic flow. We're having a really difficult time with getting access onto one hundred and fourth coming out of the windings going west. And with this additional traffic, plus I understand there's a multifamily that's going to be built down on one hundred and fourth in Sheridan that's going to bring lots of additional traffic on one hundred and fourth. We're struggling within the windings, just trying to be able to get out on one hundred and fourth, and I haven't heard any conversation about how to handle the traffic or the traffic flow.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Kastner.
My name's Andrew Kastner, I live at thirty-nine, thirty-two West one hundred and third Avenue, pretty much directly across from the proposed entrance to the site there. My concerns are, where's construction entrance going to be? Is it going to come from one hundred and fourth? Are they planning on coming in through one hundred and third for construction? And where's the parking going to be? Our cul-de-sac is tiny, holds about three or four cars as it is, so that's a concern of mine. And is this going to be a gated community? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Hunter, Hunter Whitmire.
Hello, I'm Hunter Whitmire, I live at four zero two five West one hundred and third Avenue in the windings. I share similar concerns as Joanne with traffic. I'm wondering if, has there been any considerations to have access into this new neighborhood on one hundred and fourth? Turning left is extremely difficult, I have two teenage, soon-to-be teenage boys, soon-to-be driving. It's difficult enough for me to turn left across this intersection, and it's going to, it's going to be increasingly more difficult with the excess residents in the neighborhood. So my, my question was more so around, has it been exercised or looked at to have access on one hundred and fourth into the neighborhood?
Thank you.
And the last speaker I've signed up is John Palmer.
Good evening, John Palmer, I live on Low Boulevard. Couple of things I'd like you to take into consideration before approving this, or questions to be asked. Will this be an HOA? And will they be requesting a metro district? The one-in, one-out that this features, I believe is a safety hazard, and I believe you folks have talked about this on numerous occasions on numerous projects. You know, we don't need another superior situation where these people would be trapped by only one in and one out. There needs to be some kind of emergency second exit out of this development. I didn't hear much speaking of the required amenities as per code, so if we could maybe get that addressed. And lastly, they're talking about having to remove some buildings that are existing. Will they abate the asbestos or any contaminants they're on? If these buildings are all pre-mid, mid-seventies, we know they've got asbestos in them or on them. So can we make sure that that's addressed so that the people in the windings aren't subjected to asbestos, asbestos toastess? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker who signed up.
Okay. So unless there's anyone else who wishes to speak at this time, I'm going to close the public testimony. And actually, I'm going to set aside a little bit of time here for questions because I'm sure commissioners may have more questions at this time. Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I heard a lot of people asking some questions about traffic, and I think it's probably worthwhile to have our traffic engineer stand up and talk a little bit about the impact of this development. I think there's reasons why access isn't on one hundred and fourth, but I'll let him explain those. And then I, I don't know if you can also handle the emergency access, why there's only one in-access in and out? That would be helpful too, thank you.
Good evening, Commission, Heath Klein, acting assistant city engineer and transportation engineer. So we did do a traffic study on this, and it is anticipated with the nineteen units that it will generate approximately a hundred and eighty trips per day. And in the morning peak hour, about thirteen, and in the PM peak hour, about eighteen trips. So with that, we did not determine that it was enough of an impact to separate that and not allow the traffic to go onto one hundred and third and use the existing network that we have. One hundred and fourth is an arterial, and so we did want to limit the access points to that. It has always been determined that this site, if developed, would access one hundred and third. There is that existing drive that was constructed that abuts one hundred and third. There were the two access points currently on one hundred and fourth Avenue, but we are having those removed. That was the existing condition. The emergency access point with the nineteen units, that falls within our regulations and standards to only require one point of access. So the concern that we did have, as a lot of our neighbors have brought up, is that if we had another, since it's such a relatively skinny site, if there would have been an access point for a right-in, right-out on one hundred and fourth Avenue, it could be also used by the rest of the neighborhood too, and we would have a lot more cut-through traffic through this existing neighborhood. So that was part of what went into the determination. And since it did meet the requirements for emergency access, we did not pursue another point of connection to one hundred and fourth Avenue. we did not pursue another point of connection to one-hundred-and-fourth Avenue. Yes, so the reason why it's meeting the bike plan is our long-term goal is to have a ten-foot-wide sidewalk along one-hundred-and-fourth Avenue from Sheridan all the way up to Federal Boulevard. And so since this is a new development and we require them to do the property improvements along their property frontage, we are requiring them to do the ten-foot sidewalk now, which would be a multi-use trail. At some future point, the city will look to extend the ten-foot-wide trail along the south side of one-hundred-and-fourth Avenue.
And I'm assuming that bicycle trail can be accessed into the community then, too, onto one-hundred-and-third Avenue?
Yeah, that will- Thank you. I'm done.
Everybody woke up.
But yes, you will be able to access one-hundred-and-fourth from the subdivision. But the point of meeting the master plan, for the bicycle master plan, was the trail along one-hundred-and-fourth. It wasn't really the internal-
So it is a new widening of that sidewalk?
It is, absolutely.
And then this is not a gated community?
No, this is not a gated community.
Something on here that looks black. I think some people might have thought it was gated.
Yeah, no, this is not a gated community. To be a gated community in the city of Westminster, it would force all the roadways to be privately maintained because it's not a public-accessed road.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairperson Bosscher, can I? Chairperson?
Yeah, sorry.
Can I add on to that statement from, no? Because I'd like to clarify something that Heath said. While the road, the new road is not proposed to be gated, the access point onto one-hundred-and-fourth, the pedestrian one, is proposed to be gated. They have asked on their plans to include a gate onto there, so the fence that would be, perimeter fence for the development, would have a gate that would block that access point.
Is it a locked gate?
Not identified as a locked gate, no.
So anybody can walk through it? So if you're riding a bicycle, you'd have to stop, get off your bike, open the gate, and walk through it?
Correct.
And why would we do that?
So that is a private tract, and we allow private tracts that are owned by HOAs to be able to limit access to them. We have allowed this in several other HOA communities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek.
So what precludes the HOA from slapping a lock on that thing and keeping people out?
Nothing, Commissioner. It's not designated as a public path. It doesn't have a public-access easement over. It's private property, and it would be their purview. There is a utility easement there, so our understanding right now is that we don't want them to put a lock on it, but foreseeably, things may arise in the future. Thank you.
So they could exclude bicycle traffic through this development?
Correct. Well, on that private tract, the city's plans do not call for a bicycle path to be through this property between one-hundred-and-fourth and one-hundred-and-third. Our bicycle plan is only for the sidewalk along one-hundred-and-fourth.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question, and this is probably for the applicant. One of the speakers during the public testimony brought up the question of both zero-scaping and solar panels. And he is absolutely correct that solar panels are much cheaper to install in the original construction. Have you considered offering them as an option at least?
Well, I mean, we are not the builders. We were just doing the land development. So, I mean, though it may be cheaper, it's still a thirty, forty-thousand-dollar endeavor for somebody. So if it's mandated and somebody doesn't want it, then they're getting stuck with something that costs that, you know, they wouldn't be too happy about. So I think, you know, as the gentleman spoke, I mean, we're going that direction anyway. I would think most of these people would choose that, but to make it an obligation, we didn't feel it was right. So that's why we left them off. But we are pre-wiring it because we feel people will go that way. We just didn't want to mandate it, so.
Okay, and that brings up another question. A lot of communities are phasing out natural gas. Are you going to encourage your builders to make everything electric? Or how do you approach that?
Well, I don't know that that's our place, and I would think that'd be left to the city, the building department. But I think it'd be smart for them to consider that. I mean, again, that's the direction everything's going. So yeah, that'd be advisable, but I don't know that we have any ability to dictate that to them, but certainly the city would maybe have that in the building department and-
Okay. Well, all right, Jacob, how does the city address that?
So we do allow natural gas to be used in homes. XL's currently offering it. We don't have, as far as I'm aware, any plans in the foreseeable future to prohibit the use of natural gas in new developments.
Okay, is the city encouraging it at all, the switch to electric?
We're not aware of any initiatives.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I had. Thanks. More questions? Commissioner calling?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, and there's a couple of other things that people were asking about. I want to make sure we provide answers to them. One of them was the construction access. Are we giving the applicant suggestions for the construction access, or can you address that, Jacob?
So typically with an ODP and a PDP, we don't look at the construction access or construction plans at that time, such as where the construction workers would park. We do, as staff, provide them with input on where the access could be located and where they would be allowed, where parking could occur. But typically, we don't do that during the ODP process.
Right, I understand that. But it was a question that came up, and I guess I'll ask the applicant. Do you have, in terms of construction access, would you access off one-hundred-and-fourth or one-hundred-and-third? For like, concrete trucks, I'm thinking loaders, all that heavy construction traffic?
Yeah, truthfully, I think if it was off one-hundred-and-fourth for some of the larger vehicles, that'd make more sense. But again, that's a matter that will be left up to the city, I feel. Yeah, as far as parking, you know, we haven't got to that point, but definitely I can see the concern with that. In my thirty years, you know, most sites like that, it's, you park on-site as opposed to on the roadways. So that would certainly be a recommendation by us, but again, not everybody has a leash you can reel them in. But yeah, we would certainly, out of respect for the neighborhood and keeping the volume of cars down, yeah, it'd be best to try and put them on the site. Now, there's certain times where you're doing overlot grading and things of that nature, but a site of this size, you could probably work sections at a time to where there would be parking staging areas, I guess, if you will, that we'll try and put on-site.
Well, just be aware that the surrounding community is concerned about that, and maybe you could work with the city, and possibly we could be allowed to use some access from one-hundred-and-fourth for some of the construction work, possibly. Just keep that in mind. That's all I ask you to do.
Yeah, and again, that's, whatever they deems the right approach to that, we'll follow.
Okay, and then while I have you here, I know you're doing an HOA. Someone asked about that.
Yes, we are.
How about Metro District?
No Metro District. I don't even believe City Westminster allows Metro Districts on residential anymore, so. You do? Maybe larger ones, I don't know, but I think we did discuss this early on.
We do allow Metro Districts. I don't believe that under the city's policy, this would qualify for one. We have not asked about it.
That was what it was, but yeah.
And then a question came up about amenities. Jacob, do you want to summarize that for the audience?
Sure.
Do you mind summarizing that, the amenities?
Sure. So for projects under a hundred units, we do not require things like clubhouses or pools and those such things. Typically, with the term amenity, I immediately go to our private park requirement. So we do require four percent of this total site area to be reserved as a private park, to include an open-play area, a quarter of that. So they are showing an open-play area in between lots thirteen and fourteen. They're including that basketball court as a, kind of as a dual combo for their emergency access vehicle easement across that private park. They're going to use a portion of that for their basketball court. And then the other amenities would include covered mail kiosks, and there's access to one-hundred-and-fourth walking for residents. And then the detention pond also is kind of an amenity for homeowners on here and homeowners adjacent, because it'll help divert some of the existing flows to that detention pond and away from their homes. So if you want to stretch the term amenity, maybe that's it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Is there anything you would like to add?
No, I just was going to stay there in case there was something else. I can't remember other questions, so.
How about, either you can address it or Jacob, but when you're tearing down the homes, obviously you'll follow guidelines related to asbestos-
Absolutely, we have one-hundred percent.
...requirements of the city. The city has requirements for that-
Yes.
-to make sure that's abated properly.
You have the state demolition permits and everything, but I will speak. That building is basically a block building. It's painted, but it doesn't have anything in there other than block, so it's, it shouldn't need to be- Oh, they filled the- Yeah, that's a good point. But anyway, yeah, we will have to get it inspected, and then we'll go from there. If it needs abatement, then we'll have to do it.
Okay, thank you.
South of the pool? Oh, it's tin. My mistake. It's not block.
Can we please have-
I'm sorry, can you please come forward and introduce yourself in here?
You're just saying there's one little original pump house that it was block, but the rest of the building is actually-
My name is Lloyd Donley. I'm one of the- There's two separate buildings to the south of the house. You have the pool, and then the, you can see just the white top there. That's a tin metal building that they, it's got like, seven-foot ceilings. But it's all metal. But right next to that is like, an original pump house that went with the house way back when. I think this house was built in nineteen fourteen. And the same owners were there, so it hasn't changed.
So then those concerns are warranted. Just make sure you have those checked very carefully and follow all the state guidelines.
Absolutely.
And the demolition, I mean, demo's always tricky, but it shouldn't be a messy demo where you have, you know, like a home, when you tear those down, there's a lot of dust. But these types of structures should be able to keep things under control as possible.
And I think the only other concern or question that came up was from Mr. Bookman about housing challenges and affordability. I think this site is too small to probably include affordability or moderately-income housing, because it is such a small site, but we do require that on larger developments to some extent. Is that correct?
So we do have a specific housing affordability requirement across the city. We did share this with our colleagues in the Economic Development Department, who lead the city's affordable housing initiatives. They did not ask specifically to require any affordable housing with this development in there, and I think it's mostly to do with the size of the development and the scale of what would be allowed under the comprehensive plan.
Right, okay. And what is the price point? Do you think these properties will be? Ballpark.
I've spoken with many builders, and at this point, things are so out of whack, it seems, still. But I can't imagine anything being less than a million and a half to two-range.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yes, of course.
Councilor calling? I have something to add to Jacob's comments. Just for everybody's information, the city council hasn't currently formally adopted a housing policy. They're on track to potentially do that early next year. The city has just commissioned a housing needs assessment, and that kickoff for that process happened coincidentally today. And so we should have our housing needs analysis data completed by December. And so probably early into next year, the council may discuss housing policy and may arrive at something in line with what you're thinking.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Getting back to the traffic one more time. So I get there's a background traffic problem on one-hundred-and-fourth and getting out on one-hundred-and-fourth, but that would be from the Perry exit. Isn't there another, can't they get over to Lowell and maybe hit that traffic? Isn't there a traffic light over there?
Correct. There is a traffic light at one-hundred-and-fourth in Lowell Boulevard. The neighborhood, the Windings and Highland Greens East, if they chose to go up to one-hundred-and-third, still, you know, Lowell Boulevard can be well-traveled as well. So there is that concern, but we did look at whether or not there's traffic signal warrants, and neither of those access points right now meet a warrant for a new traffic signal.
Got it. Is there an idea or future plan for a traffic signal at Perry and one-hundred-and-fourth? Or is that too close to, that's probably Legacy Ridge is right across the street there?
Correct. It would not meet our current, the spacing, per our standards and specs. With that said, if it were to meet a warrant, and in the city of Westminster, we have a policy of two of the warrants to be met for that, especially for an existing intersection. But if it were to be met, we could look at that, because signal timing, you can kind, it's close enough that you could almost operate them as one. But at this current time, it did not meet enough volume to meet a warrant for an installation of a signal.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions? Okay, I think it's time to entertain a motion. Can we get someone to put one on the floor, please? Commissioner calling?
I move to recommend the city council approve the rezoning preliminary development plan and official development plan for Orchard Estates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Bosscher.
In favor?
Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner calling. Yes. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
And Commissioner Jean.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I would like to take a ten-minute recess in case anyone needs to use the restroom. I know some of the commissioners might. So we will reconvene at eight-eleven. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And looking at the next agenda item, I'd like to open the public hearing on item three B, a public hearing in consideration of official development plan for Uplands filing one, block two, PAA two. And I believe we are having a presentation today from Amy Johnson?
Yes, that's correct, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair, I'm Amy Johnson, uh, Senior Planner with the City. As a part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to one thousand nine hundred sixty-one property owners and occupants, um, and that included addresses as well, as well as, uh, one HOA within one thousand feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here is a map showing the proposed Uplands subdivision and vicinity with the subject filing one block two, also known as planning area A two, official development plan or ODP area of the thirteen point nine acres outlined in red. It is located east of Lowell Boulevard and adjacent to the north of future eighty-sixth Avenue. The applicant currently has under review a final plat, construction drawings and conditional letter of map revision, or CLOMAR, subject to FEMA approval, which cover public improvements for the greater Uplands parcel A bounded by Eighteenth, Lowell, Eighty-Fourth and Federal Boulevard. One of the recommended conditions of approval for this Uplands filing one block two ODP is the recordation of the parcel A plat, without which the legal description for this ODP would be incorrect and other items might be unverifiable. We will discuss conditions of approval further on the next slide. The Uplands filing one block two, or PAA two, ODP property is zoned planned unit development, or PUD, and designated as mixed-use neighborhood development in the comprehensive plan. The applicant proposes twenty-five single-family detached homes, thirty duplexes and eighty townhomes on the thirteen point nine acre parcel. A point six acre park includes a shade structure and community garden. The applicant wished to move ahead to public hearings prior to the recordation of the final plat and approval of construction drawings for the larger Uplands parcel A, and also prior to the completion of staff reviews of this ODP. Many items in this ODP hinge upon the approval of the parcel A improvements, so staff has recommended eight conditions of approval, which are listed in the summary of staff recommendation toward the end of the agenda memo, to ensure that this ODP will meet all of the approval standards and requirements prior to recordation and issuance of building permits for this ODP. All conditions of approval and associated corrections may be viewed in attachments five through twelve to the agenda memo. The applicant is requesting fourteen exceptions to standards with this ODP. Ten of the exceptions are proposed to amend specific standards listed in the Uplands master ODP, which was approved in two thousand twenty-one. The exceptions are justified by the applicant on sheets five and six of attachment two, and are also summarized numerically in attachment four. Section eleven five fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code contains seventeen criteria that are to be considered for an official development plan. Several examples of these criteria are that the plan conforms with the PDP, city code, ordinances and policies, exceptions are warranted, infrastructure proposed will serve the development, streets are suitable to carry traffic, and the applicant is in good standing with the city. Staff finds that the ODP will generally meet these criteria with the recommended conditions of approval as outlined in the agenda memo and attachments. Staff finds that a recommendation of conditional approval of the application would meet the city's strategic plan priority to ensure that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities for residents, businesses and visitors that honor the city's history and support the arts, parks, recreation, open spaces and libraries, and that that would be met by facilitating new development and providing new publicly, a new publicly accessible park space. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and recommend that city council approve the ODP, subject to the additional conditions listed in the summary of staff recommendation in the agenda memo. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well, thanks for your attention, and there are also several staff members here that could answer other questions you may have.
Thank you. Applicant could go ahead and make presentation.
Terrific, good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name is Marcus Pockner, I am a land use and community outreach consultant to the Uplands team, my address is fourteen eighty Humboldt Street, Denver, Colorado. Um, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're going to call out slides, so next slide, please. Um, we will diligently work through this presentation, Bonnie, Najalik and I will cover most of the presentation. Uh, here is the team that is here, Bonnie and I, Matt Childers is here from the proposed builder, and then we have a team of experts that are here to answer any questions that you may have. Next slide, please. This is our Planning Commission agenda, the items that I will cover in this presentation to go through a little bit of the public notice, the background, talk about general Uplands update, and then go specifically to the neighborhood plan A two that is before you tonight, and the specific requests for the approval or recommendation for approval of the ODP on A two. Next slide. For context, thank you very much, Amy, for a very thorough staff report and for all the collaboration on this site. Um, just framing this site, this is the first site we have brought forward on parcel A, the larger site, of course, bounded by Eighty-Fourth to Eighty-Eight and Lowell to Federal. This is that site between Eighty-Sixth and Eighty-Seventh and Lowell to Irving. So really that first neighborhood, we'll talk a lot about the context of the surrounding, but certainly important to understand it in the framing of overall parcel A. Next slide. With this, I will introduce Matt Childers to introduce a little bit about Dreamfinders, the proposed builder on this site.
Hi Commissioners, Matt Childers, Regional, uh, Vice President of Land for Dreamfinders here in Colorado. You guys have a little familiarity with, uh, Dreamfinders from our B one presentation here a few weeks ago, uh, so I'll keep it short, but one thing that we think is just so special about Uplands is, is, is just the property and the uniqueness of it, and as such, we, we feel to be proper stewards of it, we need to bring fresh architecture. Uh, we're excited with B one, we have new, two new plan series in there, we'll be carrying one of those plan series, our paired homes, over to A two, and then here in A two, we'll be debuting a brand new townhome series, fresh for Uplands, as, as well as a single-family product as well, so we're really excited to be a part of the project and, and excited to be the, the first builder here in parcel A. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Next slide, I think I'll go quickly, this is, um, Amy provided this, the Uplands notice area, we want to thank staff for really expanding that footprint, we think it's very important to include the majority of Shaw Heights to be included in this discussion. Next slide, please. So ladies and gentlemen, we always start, uh, with the next slide here, that's a little bit of community-wide Uplands update. We think it's important to frame the community, so the public or anybody watching knows kind of why we're focused on these. So this shows a map that we showed a, a few months ago, it gives the update in red, you see the sanitary sewer improvements on the north side of Shaw Boulevard, in green are those storm drainage improvements as well, on Shaw, again on that north side, that really make those connections for existing flooding issues, and then you see blue, the water infrastructure that will come in, you see the internal street network as well, and of course, the full movement intersection at Federal and Eighty-Sixth. Next slide. Again, framing this, yes, as Matt just mentioned, we're very excited that B one site was actually approved last night by city council, um, so the first neighborhood is moving forward, but as we look at A, I think it's important, the dark orange shows, A two, you see there at the top, the neighborhood before you tonight, are in the typical, the traditional neighborhood review process, the light orange now are going through the concept review process, right? What's important is on the right, um, it's always hard, people ask us about the individual neighborhoods, but in all of those neighborhoods that are highlighted, we have affordable housing, we have forfeit, for sale single homes, uh, for sale paired homes, townhomes, and publicly, publicly accessible public parts. Next slide. Let's talk a little bit about those public parks, you have seen this, we are absolutely staying completely consistent with the sixty point, uh, six five acres of PLD and View Corridor. I will just point out that A two, that we're going to get to in just a moment, is really framed by the two largest parks on this site, an eleven acre and a ten acre park that really frame and have a lot to do with the development of this site. Next slide, please. We wanted to continue to layer on, again from that PDP that came before all of you and was approved in December of two thousand twenty-one, this shows the bike and pedestrian connectivity. As we are starting to build the streets and infrastructure, that bike and pedestrian connectivity gets built on the edges of this site, so it's really important to think about the ten foot on the perimeter, the ten foot multi-use trail that's around the site and is mirrored by the bike lane as well, right? So always trying to mirror that on the perimeter, and then you see the eight foot and six foot sidewalks internal to the site. Next slide, please. I do want to just show, and again, this is still improvements that are being made outside of the application before you, right? But this is the infrastructure improvement, so Lowell Boulevard going through a separate approval process, we will be adding bike lanes on both sides, and on the east side, instead of the existing gravel shoulder that's there today, we will have a ten foot mixed-use multi-use trail. The stormwater drainage today is untreated and untamed and runs to the Lowell Bottom Bowl and crosses over Shaw Boulevard over land. We will collect that land here with this plan just to the south in A three in a detention pond, and then release it through a new system. So again, showing you the improvements of the trunk infrastructure that are happening as well. Next slide. This is a new slide that we have added, I think it's just really helpful to almost put together a chart, so we have up above the overall, so people can kind of see the requirements and the commitments that we made. So you see the, uh, the open space, the number of affordable housing, we are exceeding that, the units that are in place. And then we transition to the specific neighborhood before you on A two, and of course, what guides us is approval, a criteria and being compliant. So you can see what was in the master ODP and the PDP and how we are exceeding those standards in almost every one. Uh, for example, this allows a hundred and forty-three units on the site, we are providing one thirty-five, but we are increasing the public open space in this site as well. Next slide, please. I do want to just note, um, as you all have seen, we will talk about some exceptions, Amy mentioned them, I just want to point out that just in green here. I just want to point out that just in green here is where we show compliance, right? So I just want to point out that we will have exceptions on the single-family detached homes. The reason for that is, those were 2007 standards where we didn't have the alley-loaded product. Really, it was a different standard, so you're going to see us come forward with some changes in a lot of that program, right? Consistent again, but you're going to see that, I'll just point out on the top of that stage, that's allowed in all of parcel A. So these are going to be exceptions that you're going to see a lot with the single-family detached homes. Next slide. Neighborhood plan. We are transitioning now to what's before you, what A2 that's here. Next slide, please. Just for a background, of course, what guides us and guides you, the comp plan 2013 that we started with on this site, of course, the site is T-MONed. All of parcel A was T-MONed. You see the max density, and of course, the variety of mixed uses, all of those uses permitted on the site. The next slide goes through the updated comp plan, the 2040 plan that was adopted this year. This shows, again, same density, many of the same uses with a little more detail. Of course, this is now called the mixed-use neighborhood. That is our guidance, and of course, we're being consistent with that mixed-use neighborhood. Next slide, please. This shows then the specificity, right? Overlaying the comp plan of our P D P and the M O D P, just all the particulars, right? 13.98 acres. This is the Village Residential, the guidance from the M O D P, and we are doing a max of 143 units, and we are coming in with eight less units on this site. But this is, again, the guidance of the site and what we've used to plan it. Next slide. All this talk in general, I will say, community outreach is the bedrock of this community, of what we've learned. We talked a lot, those three things there on the top, that's what's so important about the framing of the site, the friction creating, actually, interaction at Lowell. There's no engagement there today. There's no bike path, there's no sidewalk, it's gravel, really changing Lowell. So our western edge, how important that is, and then the addition of really making this a true neighborhood and a true community, but pulling those in. You see 160-plus community meetings. That's, of course, for all of parcel A, but literally thousands of community touchpoints that have talked about these individual parcels. Next slide. Briefly, just to reframe again, you cannot talk about A2 without thinking about the two large parks that are around this site. I like to think of the area on the north as almost like a civic corridor. You have the three school, or the two schools, excuse me, Shaw Heights Flynn, and then the Civic Park, right, that large park. And then in a lot of ways, we think of that Central Park as kind of our hub and the spoke of our neighborhoods around it. So really, looking at that A2, the first neighborhood that we're bringing forward, and how it relates to both of those parks. Next slide. With this one, I will transition to Bonnie. She's the architect, chief architect of our site planning details and put everything in place, so she'll walk through a lot of the neighborhood details and the perimeter in for the actual site plan.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, staff, for your time this evening. Bonnie Najelik, Norris Design, 1101 Bannick Street. As Marcus noticed, noted, the public land dedication is such a critical framework for this overall neighborhood. Kind of stepping to that next level of detail is the setbacks. So here you can see the different colors on the perimeter. We are meeting the perimeter setbacks that were established with that original master official development plan. We wanted to make sure that we are creating that transition from the existing homes to these new proposed homes. Next slide. And here you can see the overall layout for the neighborhood. We are requesting a total of 135 homes, which include a mix of single-family detached homes, paired homes, and townhomes. Access into this neighborhood is provided along West 87th Avenue and West 86th Avenue via north-south local street connections between Lowell and Irving Street. The local streets are showing up in that kind of darker gray color. All the proposed homes are alley-loaded and have front doors and porches fronting on public streets, parks, and open space, helping create a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that engages with those public spaces. The alley network is shown here in the light gray color. Next slide. The neighborhood includes a publicly accessible pocket park, which is easily accessed by the sidewalk network that runs through and around the proposed neighborhood and ultimately connects to the perimeter streets and public land dedication, Marcus pointed out, on the north and the east. Here you can see all those pedestrian connections within the neighborhood represented by dashed lines. Next slide. In addition to the 21 acres of public land dedication, we have included a .6 acre publicly-accessible private park. Next slide. As noted in the master O D P, all the parks within Uplands are themed based on the idea of bringing the inside-outside with park themes inspired from spaces within homes. This particular design is based on the pantry concept that was part of that M O D P, which focuses on community gathering and creating spaces around planting, harvesting, and cooking. So here's a view looking south across the pocket park, which features a large community garden space, large shade structure for formal and informal gatherings, a variety of passive small seating options situated under tree canopies or within orchard-like groves, an open lawn area for kids to play or set up yard games, dog pickup and bike amenities, all of which are complemented by a mix of low-water-use landscape beds and low-water turf blends. Next slide. And here's that same park looking from the south, and you can see the fenced-in community garden space, and then the sidewalk that wraps the community garden and connects to that overall trail network. Next slide. The proposed neighborhood includes a variety of sustainability features. All homes comply with Energy Star and WaterSense. All homes feature Level 2 E V charging. All single-family homes with traditional roofs are designed as solar-ready. On the landscape plan, turf is limited to active play areas, covering just 4% of the site compared to the maximum 20% coverage that is allowed within the landscape regulations. The tree lawn consists of low-water-use shrub material and native seed instead of high-water-use turf, and the plan is focused on creating pollinator corridors. Next slide. The proposed homes, as Matt said, we have some new homes within this neighborhood to add to the Uplands mix. Next slide. First, we have single-family detached homes. So these are three-story homes. There are a total of four floor plans and three architectural styles, creating 12 different options to be used on the 25 single-family lots. Each home has a two-car garage, and one of the options actually has a three-car garage as well. Next slide. Here you can see the proposed homes fronting, oops, I think we skipped one somehow. That's okay, we'll just skip ahead. Can you go to one more? Perfect, thank you. Next, we have the paired homes. So these are similar, or the same homes that were in the B1 neighborhood. We've added those to this neighborhood as well. So these are alley-loaded with two-car garages. We have three-floor plans and three architectural styles, so that's nine different options to be used on the 44 paired home lots. Next slide. So these paired homes also face public streets. Here you can see that low-water-use landscape planned for the yards and also that tree lawn. Next slide. And then last, we have our townhomes. These are also two stories. They're also alley-loaded with two-car garages. We have three-floor plans and three architectural styles for these buildings, creating nine different options for those townhome lots. Next slide. And here you can see those townhomes fronting along West 86th Avenue with low-water-use planting again. Next slide. Included within our O D P, we do have a number of exceptions to the city regulations. As we talked about with B1, exceptions have always been anticipated within Uplands in order to comply with that original vision that was established. Next slide. We talked about this in B1, too. The P U D zoning does allow for the use of exceptions to really help the plan integrate within the site, help address housing diversity, provide unique characteristics, and really just encourage innovative development. Next slide. First exception deals with parking. This is similar to B1 as well. Each of the homes requires and provides two-car garages. The single-family homes also require two-car driveways, while the paired homes and townhomes require one off-street space per three units. So we are proposing that we meet all of these requirements. We just do it in a slightly different way, really utilizing that on-street parking to provide the guest parking. So here you can see within the little orange boxes, those are all the two-car garages. Next slide. And then we add in a handful of surface spaces. These are really focused along the park so that people can, you know, take their kids to the park with coolers and whatnot, really trying to promote accessibility to that park. Next slide. Here we add in the parking on the local street, and then if you go to the next slide, we added in teal all the perimeter street. Overall, this neighborhood requires 350 parking spaces per code. We are providing 400 parking spaces within the neighborhood, and then there's an additional 14 spaces along Lowell as well. Next slide. Next, we have an exception to the pitched roofs. This, like I said, the paired homes were in the neighborhood, the B1 neighborhood as well, so we have that same exception here, just requesting a 4 and 12 pitch instead of a 5 and 12 pitch to accommodate egress windows and match one of the architectural styles. So that's shown in the upper left of this image. We also have two exceptions to the master O D P. As Marcus said, when we originally had that approved in 2021, we wanted to be consistent with what was in T-MONed because we wanted to be able to show you all these different home plans and lot sizes and ask for the exceptions on a case-by-case basis. So in this example, in place of rear decks and private yard areas, we're proposing a mix of porches, patios, decks, and side front yards to meet the same intent through a different application. These lots help activate the adjacent streets through pedestrian-friendly homes and creating eyes on these public spaces. Additionally, this provides compliance with the approved master O D P by meeting specific design statements, including providing home and lot designs that enhance that pedestrian experience, including acrid or raised porches, patios, building entries, balconies, and stoops, and minimizing the views of the garage from the street. Further, the M V P specifically noted that front setbacks should be studied at site-specific O D P in order to create those pedestrian-friendly streets. These were also designed to meet the intent of T-MONed, so a lot of those same standards exist in T-MONed were carried into the M O T P to minimize that garage visibility and increase that pedestrian activation. This also aligns with citywide goals for housing and water, making sure we're being responsible stewards of our water use and really trying to right-size these homes and lot sizes to help create that housing diversity within the city. Next slide. We also have a couple of exceptions tied to city landscape regulations. The first one, the landscape regulations do require an entry median. We are requesting to instead do an entry landscaping and monumentation at the corner, so this is the southeast corner of 87th and Lowell, since that's the upper-left image on this slide. So this design meets the same intent of the regulations. It creates and celebrates the entrance to the community just using a different form. This also gives us additional landscape area to create that entry and also creates a better living environment for trees. Those medians can get a little tight for tree roots, and so this gives them a little bit more space. It also allows for narrower entry roads that better uphold the principles of pedestrian-oriented designs while still complying with fire with and access requirements. Next, we have on-lot landscape area, which is, oh, it's shown in the upper right of this slide. So this is just for the single-family detached and paired homes. With this exception, we're requesting a minimum landscape percentage of 38% for a single-family detached homes and 28% for paired homes. So these percentages are based on the maximum allowable footprint, so some homes will actually have, will actually have a little bit more space than that. So again, this helps promote responsible water use, and it also is kind of counteracted by the publicly accessible private parks and the public land dedication on the site. So people still have really great access to great public spaces. And then focusing on the image on the bottom of this slide, we're requesting an exception to a landscape regulation connected to the attached homes. We're providing an overall landscape area of approximately 32%. Again, that helps with our water use, but it also ties back to the very diligent and detailed conversations we had with the fire department. We've had a lot of meetings to make sure that all of our access, especially with three-story products, works with the fire department. So through those conversations, our alley pavement was actually had an increase from what we were hoping them to be and what some of the city standards would be, which had some impact on the amount of landscape area within the neighborhood. Next slide. We're also working with staff, as Amy noted, on some technical corrections to the O D P. There's a handful of pages to talk through on those different items. They're all very technical corrections. We're excited to work with staff to get those resolved. None of them really impact the design of the site. It's just really kind of cleanup and coordination pieces. Two of those, we will result in removing two exceptions from the site. One is an exception, removing an exception for spacing between retaining walls. So within that private park, we'll be shifting some of those walls one foot. It won't impact the design of the park, but that will eliminate that exception, and then also working with staff to clarify some of the landscape compliance charts to show how we're meeting the different material types without any exceptions needed there. With that, I'm going to have Marcus just walk through our last two or three slides. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Yes, for our standards of approval, next slide, please. Obviously, we focus on this. We submitted a separate narrative to go through our compliance with the 17 approval criteria and how we comply with each of those. I would note the staff report talking about the creative and sound, innovative planning, and how this is harmonious, how we have tried to work with the existing and surrounding neighborhood and really to blend into Shaw Heights and the surrounding with us. The next slide, if you go to this, again, we will finish with this, I think, always to show the guidance of the P D P and the M O D P, and then how we are providing that in the A2 or sub-neighborhoods. So in this site, you see we are compliant with the density. We are actually less units than is allowed. We are actually increasing the private open space or the private park space, and we are meeting the setbacks and providing those same building forms. We want to be compliant, and most importantly, we talked a little bit about that perimeter sensitivity zone along Lowell, really being sensitive, again, to the existing neighborhoods and transitioning our height, right, is more internal to the site, respecting that two-story product along Shaw Heights. Next slide. I just respectfully request your support or recommendation on this site. We have a full team here. We end with this image looking north towards 87th. We're really excited to talk about this first neighborhood in parcel A, and thank you very much for this opportunity, and we look forward to any questions.
Thank you. Amy, did you need to add anything before?
I will just briefly add that there are 14 exceptions. One of the last slides that Bonnie Najelik spoke about, wall spacing and plant materials, were not listed in the final version of the memo. So the 14 exceptions you see in the memo are the only ones that they're asking for.
Okay. All right. At this time, we will entertain questions from any commissioners. Go ahead and turn on your light if you have a question. Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two questions. One is probably for staff. This is the second hearing in a row we've had a request for an exception on, of the landscape median as you enter a new subdivision. Is that because it's some sort of legacy in our design guidelines that things are changing? Or what's, or is this some, it sounds like it's almost a city thing here more than a developer thing at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, I would, I think that a legacy provision is a fairly accurate description, and we're generally supportive of doing the corner landscape features instead of the medians.
Got it, thank you. And the other, the other question, I see, I see we've got some side yards and things of that nature. Just thinking about being a dog owner, are there fenced yards on some of these single-family homes? Are these going to, are people just going to have to walk their dogs over to the pocket park or open space? So what is that, which is the, how is this going to work in reality?
Yes, I'm just pulling up our landscape check calls, because I do believe we have, yes, there are fenced-in side yards on the paired homes and the single-family detached homes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Tomacek.
This is maybe a process question for staff. The developers have said several times that they're going, not only going to diverge from some of the master O D P requirements on this development, but on all of them. Why is there not? Why is there not a requirement to go back and modify the master O D P rather than continuing to have exceptions all the time?
The original approval of the master O D P did not request any exceptions to T month standards. As noted by the applicant, uh, they understood that the site-specific O D Ps would be requesting that. But site-specific O D Ps are technically O D P amendments amending the master O D P. So you'll see similar, um, process and similar exceptions for probably all of the O D Ps that come through for, uh, parcel A.
Some additional questions for staff. Um, how close are you to completing the, um, some of, in, in, let me back up a second. In some of the, uh, incomplete reports and evaluations that are noted here in this, uh, submission, it's indicated that you haven't completed the documents for the master O D P, um, specifically the drainage study. Is that, did I misread that?
For those utility questions, I would refer those questions to our public works staff.
Okay. Who do we have here who can answer that for me?
Good evening, Commission. Heath Klein, Acting Assistant City Engineer and Transportation Engineer. So Commissioner Tomacek, the question of where are we at? Were several reviews into the drainage study, and the applicant has applied to FEMA for their CLOMER, the conditional letter of MAC provision. And so we are confident that, uh, the project will be approved, uh, in the coming months. So we don't anticipate major changes due to the remaining items that are left on the drainage report or the CLOMER, and so that is why we were comfortable for this project to move forward. And we are working with the Uplands team to resolve the comments that we still have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then one last question for staff. It, it's been, I've been on here, I think, for five years now. This is maybe the first one I've seen with this many outstanding issues. Um, still, you know, still needing resolution before we would normally give approval. Am I misremembering that history?
No, you're, you're, you're remembering history correctly. Um, the applicant has, has requested to advance, uh, uh, even with these outstanding issues. Staff's not concerned that the issues can't be resolved. Uh, we're working in good faith with the applicant to, uh, honor their request to advance to public hearing. Um, and, and we're, we're comfortable that we can wrap up the reviews accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McConnell.
Thank you, Chair Bosscher. Um, question for the applicant, there's some pretty significant setback reductions. Excuse me, and I'm just wondering what necessitated that, what was driving those, that request?
I think probably the best way to, um, talk about the exceptions is, um, generally, the setbacks are very consistent with what was just approved on the B one neighborhood. The rear setbacks are really tied to, um, providing, um, utility and fire access along the, within the alleys. The front setbacks are consistent with what we had requested in the B one neighborhood. Um, really, the only difference is B one, which was identified in the comp plan as a low-density neighborhood with a maximum of five DUs per acre. Those had seven and a half foot setbacks. Um, within A, we're T month or mixed-use neighborhood, which has an eighteen DU per acre. So it's naturally just a little bit more dense of a neighborhood. So here, we're asking for five-foot side setbacks instead of the seven and a half foot.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's the last one from him. I have several questions, probably for Matt from Dreamfinders. It's my understanding that the builder is more of the decider in what amenities as far as, uh, renewable energy are put on each home. Are you going to consider using solar panels on the roofs before the homes have been sold? Or are you only going to leave that up to the buyers?
It's a little bit to be determined. I believe prescriptively, Bonnie correct me if I'm wrong, we're, we're pre-wiring every single home to allow for solar readiness. What we've experienced in other communities, Sterling Ranch is probably the most like-kind community. If you guys are familiar with that, Northwest Douglas County, where we often force solar panels on a percentage of the homes. It's just a pulse on the, the current market and what we think the customers will request. Uh, solar panels get a little bit tricky in that we can either buy them and there's something like fifteen to twenty thousand dollars upfront, and those wind up getting baked into the mortgage of our future buyers, or at point of contract, they can actually negotiate a lease with the solar provider, which essentially reduces their utility pricing. So it, the, the nuances of exactly how we make that decision, um, are a little bit to be determined. But, but without a doubt, we plan to offer solar on, on a large number of these homes.
Will buyers be able to ask for solar at the time of purchase? Or will they have to add it after they have purchased the home and, and gone through the mortgage, uh, applications?
The expectation is at point of sale, they'll be able to add that.
Okay, good. Um, my next question is, as you may have heard previously, uh, a lot of cities are phasing out natural gas. Have you considered, um, all-electric for your construction?
We've considered it. The reality is, is that the, the buying populace has still largely not accepted all-electric. And so to be competitive with adjacent and nearby communities, it's something we're still hesitant to truly phase out. We're making several initiatives to push that direction as, as quickly as possible. Uh, for example, the two-twenty outlets we're offering in every single garage. We, we definitely want to encourage energy readiness, um, for sustainability. But we have, we have not yet gotten to the point where we feel like it's, it's the prudent decision to totally rule out natural gas in the community.
Okay, well, the, kind of a related question. A lot of, of the service panels in existing homes do not have enough expansion room for extra two-hundred-and-twenty volt. I've run into this numerous times in, in project I've been working on. Uh, are you going to allow enough expansion in your service panels that people can add additional two-twenty volt lines for any electricity they may want to add to their homes?
Frankly, Chairperson, that's a fair question. It's not something I've fully considered at this point in time, and it's, it's a fair question. Of course, uh, the electrical design, which will be driven by the electrical provider, will account for the two-twenty's that we will have in the garages, but have not necessarily considered for additional drops in the other locations you're talking about.
Okay, well, the two-twenty in the garage is a good step. But as I say, a lot of folks who want to add solar have to either put in a sub-panel or just don't do it because, um, they don't have enough expansion room. And I just think that, uh, for future, if we do want to go away from fossil fuels and get to renewables, having that expansion room is really going to be important. And, uh, I urge you to consider that when you, uh, begin, uh, building these homes. And I don't know if you're the person to ask the third question. The affordable housing was a little confusing. I know this site requires three hundred, but I couldn't, thank you, Matt. I couldn't, uh, quite understand the slide you had there.
Yeah, yes, sir. I, I actually want to apologize in our slide. So we showed the affordable housing, um, and it got carried into A two as well. Okay, so this is not, A two does not have affordable housing on it. Uh, that was carried down. We want to be sure that, as, as you know, sir, in each of these sub-neighborhoods, we are providing different types of housing, right? So here we have the three different housing typologies. But in application right now, there are three hundred and seventeen units of affordable housing below eighty percent A M I. So that is not on this site. I want to be clear about that, and we will correct that slide that got carried into the A two. So I just want to be clear, there is not affordable housing on this parcel, but in application across Uplands, there's three hundred plus units.
Okay, let me ask you real quick, what are you looking at for price point on your townhomes?
I don't know. Um, I, I will look to Matt here a little bit. I think they are looking at their marketplace. I believe this is a brand-new product, is what I heard Matt say this townhome. So I'm going to defer to him a little bit on that. I think we were talking earlier about best-case scenario. You understand this very well. This would be probably maybe breaking ground in the first or second quarter of twenty twenty-five, right? After that trunk infrastructure. So I think we're a long ways away from price points. I will tell you, it was discussed last evening that the median price of homes in Westminster is well over six hundred thousand now, and Shaw Heights is, you're seeing four and five hundred thousand, right? So, sir, I think one of the things we're really just trying to do, that townhome, as you saw in the architectural design, has a smaller footprint, right? It really does kind of attainable by design. So I don't know if we know that price point, but we're definitely trying to push that number down and bring that into the neighborhood.
Right, and that's why I ask about the townhomes, because they look like they'd be the most logical.
Absolutely.
So, okay, all right, thank you. That's all I had. Any other questions? All right, at this time, I would like to open the public testimony portion of the, uh, hearing and ask the clerk if you've got any voicemails or emails that did not make it into the public record yet.
We had no voicemails, and all of the emails made it into the public record.
Okay, with that in mind, I will start the testimony with the list. If you signed up at the beginning of this meeting, you are on the list, and, uh, I will let Abby go ahead and start calling people.
Our first speaker is Nancy Travis.
Good evening, Nancy Travis. I live on Circle Drive. One of my main concerns, not that I'm for any of this development, because one of my very main concerns is we do not have enough traffic lights already in this neighborhood that we're willing to bring in at least over how many thousands more people? Our streets are not made for this type of traffic. To me, eighty-fourth and Federal, whenever I've got to go east on eighty-fourth and pass over Federal, that is a death trap. You are waiting to be hit. I've seen, I've lived in this neighborhood over fifty years. I have seen numerous bad accidents there. I have seen them at eighty-eighth and Federal. I have seen them at ninety-second, ninety-sixth, eightieth and Federal. Federal is nothing but a nightmare. You have a lot of younger drivers that are texting, that are talking to their friends. If we cannot even control the traffic today, what is it going to be like when you add all these other houses? Something needs to be done today. We should not have to wait till somebody else dies. And I know a lot of lives have been taken already. Another thing that, I am a senior citizen on a very fixed income, because if you, you might remember, you start working, let me tell you, you were lucky if you got two bucks an hour. You thought you were doing really good. Unfortunately, I know these houses are going to go for a lot more than I can afford my property taxes to keep going up. I already can get the senior discount. I don't know what next year is going to bring to me. But let me tell you, I'm paying more in taxes than what I can bring in in one month. And when I'm looking probably two to three months of my social security going to property taxes, I don't need it to keep coming up. I have a very small house now. These houses, I know, are more than nine hundred square feet. My house is not even nine hundred square feet, and I have been in there since eighty-nine. I feel that the people in this area are being pushed out. I've heard a lot of people say I'm moving out of state because I can no longer afford to live in Colorado. I have a sister that once said a year or two ago to me, "It's sad when our kids cannot even afford to live in the state they were born in." And I have to now agree with her. When our kids that were raised and born here cannot afford to live, not alone just in our state, but even in the same town, I was born in Denver. So yes, I am a native, and it's sad to see that we are pushing away our natives and we are welcoming out-of-staters to come in here and take over Colorado. But we do need to look, I don't see where we're putting new lights, traffic lights up. And I've got enough traffic on Circle Drive. And I figured one of these days when I have nothing better to do for the full day, I'm going to count the cars that pass my house every single day. And I know what's on Lowell every day. Because when those kids' parents come pick them up from the elementary, they're coming right past my house. At least they know how to go around the block, which is more than the middle school parents know how to do. But they pass my house every day. And it's hard for me to get in and out of my driveway, let alone what are those people on Lowell going to feel like? Thank you.
Thank you. I would remind everyone to not only state your name and address, but please keep your comments to less than five minutes. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Eileen Satwicky, Sawwicky.
Yes, my name is Eileen Suwicky, and I live at eighty-eight thirteen Kent Street, and I have been there since nineteen eighty-three. Um, I have a question. I'm paraphrasing, but I think a comment was made.
Eileen, can you pull that mic towards you just a little bit more? Thank you, we want to hear everything you say.
A comment was made that, um, the designers are, are going to be working with and considering the neighborhood to blend in. This neighborhood that you're speaking about is ninety-eight percent single-level homes. You talked about three-story, single-family homes with two-car garages. You talked about townhomes or paired homes two-story with two-car garages and townhomes two-story with garages. How does that blend in with any of the neighboring homes? It doesn't, not at all. So I'm just putting that out there. And then again, like the woman before me, is there going to be any kind of traffic lights on Lowell between West eighty-seventh and West eighty-sixth? So basically, there aren't a whole lot of answers.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Palmer.
Good evening again, John Palmer, uh, live on Lowell. Very concerned about this project all around. But I would have to agree with Ms. Suwicky in regards to the heights and the, how it does not conform to our neighborhood. All of our, our neighborhood is all ranch homes, single-story, uh, thirteen-hundred-foot square lots. Okay, here's some questions. Uh, haven't heard a mention of an H O A, I'm sure there is. Would be nice to know here publicly how much the H O A is going to cost and who's going to run that. I would also be assuming that this will be part of the metro district that they've already asked for at point five-oh. So let's add that into the cost as well as the H O A cost of the homes when you're considering. Uh, there was mention of the FEMA report, still not in, hasn't been signed off, nor has it been. nor has the uh, Metro Stormwater, hasn't signed off yet. I believe the city is still holding them up on the storm drainage that runs down Shaw, which is part of this development, believe it or not. Excuse me. A couple other questions here. Um, garage depths, what are the garage depths? Are they going to be large enough to accommodate today's larger vehicles? The king, king cab trucks, your expeditions, your explorers? Will there be room for them? Sufficient room, not the bumper touching the front wall and the garage door just barely clearing. On street parking, I, I saw that on numerous streets there. What are the widths of those streets? And how will they accommodate traffic on both sides? What are the widths? Are they more than thirty-two feet? If not, I believe that's a problem with cars on both sides and allowing the fire apparatus, the big truck to maneuver on the street with cars parked on both sides. You heard Marcus talk about community outreach. I think I've probably been to more meetings than anybody, but I still question the number that he puts out there. I, I think you guys should ask for a report of where were they? How many people attended? And when were they? Instead of just being given a blanket number that Marcus is giving you. Now here's the biggie. I've looked at the environmental reports. I don't know how many of you people are familiar with that area. At one point, there was a dry cleaner up at Eighty-Eighth and Lowell where the Safeway was. Dry cleaners used to just pour their chemicals out in the field. Environmental reports that I've seen at Eighty-Eighth and Lowell, the three test holes, the only three test holes they did at Eighty-Eighth and Lowell on the corner of this property were above legal limits for ground contamination in the water. And we're talking carcinogens, we're not talking piddly things. Now, they're going to tell you all's all right, but they haven't done any more drilling as the land progresses through this property down to Shaw. If it's in the groundwater, it goes to the lowest point. So obviously, it's passing right through this A two development from Eighty-Eighth and Lowell moving south. I think that's a great concern, especially with, with the, the elementary school right there on Lowell. You know, we're going to start digging up ground, uh, digging for infrastructure. How is that going to affect the faculty, the teachers, the students that are there at the school on Lowell? Again, like I say, they're going to tell you it's, it's all okay, but they're only going off of three test holes at Eighty-Eighth and Lowell. I live on Lowell, I have not seen any more test holes at Eighty-seventh, Eighty-sixth, Shaw. It's a concern that needs to be addressed. I think you guys need to ask and ask to see the reports. Now just take it at, at face value, their word, because it is a concern. Carcinogens, cancer-causing agents. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker I have signed up is Castner. I think he may have left. Is Andrew Castner still here?
Okay, so that was probably the last person on the sign up. I'm going to ask if there's anyone else who would like to speak before I close the public testimony. All right, seeing none, I'm closing the public testimony and we'll entertain a motion on this item. Nobody wants to jump in? Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I move that we recommend that City Council approve the official development plan for the subject property known as the Uplands filing one block two, subject to all eight of the conditions listed in the agenda memo.
Commissioner Colling or Commissioner Dunn, who's going to second?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Comments? Your last chance. All right, seeing none, I will call the question.
One second.
Oh, we got somebody last minute.
Well, I, I think there's, there's a couple of things that we need to address. And Heath, as representative of engineering, you might be best to answer these for us. Um, what Mr. Palmer was referring to about the drill holes and the contamination from the, the dry cleaner that was there and the lack of other holes. How do we determine whether or not additional holes are needed?
Good evening, Heath Klein. Right now, we're working with the state to make sure that that EA environmental assessment is done in compliance with the state regulations. And I am not as familiar with what the findings are right now. That is with our, uh, stormwater coordinator who is not here tonight. She's been reviewing the environmental report.
So, so the stated concerns over the, oh, Captain Jacob.
So, yeah.
Vice Chairperson McConnell. So we did actually request the developer to, uh, drill additional holes on specifically the PLD parcel and that's directly north of here. So that's where they identified the plume moving. Um, I can't name the specific chemical that they identified, but it was associated with the dry cleaner. Um, so right now that plume is on the PLD property. We were aware of this at the time that we accepted the PL, or we currently have accepted the property, but at the time, we recommended approval of the PDP showing the location of that PLD. We were aware of this plume. Um, it's a, a type of contaminant that's only of concern if you expose it to air. Um, our current plans for that is a park. So we're not going to have people living on top of it. They're not going to be using it for that sort of purpose. Um, so our concerns are very low for that contaminant and that plume there. But we are aware of it and we have requested, and they have provided additional sampling for that plume.
And the, the results of this, these, um, excuse me, they would be included on our to-do list for approval? The, the list of exceptions and things that the applicant has to take care of as well as us?
No, no, so there is no, there's no future action items for this plume as identified. So, um, as I understand it, the plume is made of chemicals that will eventually disassociate. They will break down on their own over time. Uh, that is a process that will take potentially a few, uh, maybe up to a couple of decades. Uh, but as we're not extracting groundwater from here, we're not proposing to extract the groundwater and use it, and we're not proposing to actively inhabit that area. Uh, we're not actively concerned with that plume.
Thank you, Jacob. And Chair Boshier, I do have another question about street widths and side, parking on the side of the streets and the widths of the two lanes and what that looks like.
Yeah, the street widths are all consistent with what was provided within the, both the PDP and the master ODP. Um, much of the streets that you're looking at are the local street, which is the city's standard local street. Um, so they do provide parking on both sides. Um, the flow line dimension. Let me find that really fast for you. Um, so the flow line dimension for a local street is thirty feet plus the curb and gutter. So that accommodates two ten-foot travel lanes and two seven-foot parking lanes. And, um, the number of meetings and design reviews we did with the fire department, um, was very careful and thoughtful. Um, part of the exhibits that were attached to the staff memo were very specific street sections showing where the fire trucks could go, where their ladders go. Um, they considered all the on-street parking. So that's something that we looked at in very, very close detail.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner calling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you, Bonnie, did you say two ten-foot travel lanes and two seven-foot parking lanes? That's our city standard? Wow, seven's really narrow.
Yes, so, uh, right now, our typical local roadway width is what we call thirty-four feet from flow line to flow line. And so that is the seven-foot parking on either side and then provides the twenty-foot clear for our emergency, which is the two ten-foot travel lanes.
That is consistent with the previous development we heard this evening?
Absolutely, it is in our standards and specs.
Since you're up here, let me go ahead and ask you something else. There were several people that were asking questions about traffic. And I know you've addressed this multiple times, traffic lights, you know, what warrants those traffic lights? Can you kind of walk through that a little bit to explain?
Yes, so, uh, when we, we do look at the trip generation for new sites and include the site background for evaluation, whether or not an intersection will warrant a traffic signal. With the grid system that is being proposed, none of the Eighty-seventh, the Eighty-sixth or Eighty-fifth avenues warranted a traffic signal.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chair Boshier, may I, um, I, we do have Sarah Krasznowski here with our fire department. And she can speak to one of the conditions of approval, which has to do with some technical corrections to the fire travel paths, uh, which were brought up.
Very good, yes, let's hear it.
Hi there, Lieutenant Krasznowski, Fire Plans Analyst with Westminster Fire. Um, we've had many conversations about, um, the fire apparatus specification sizes and turning radii to make sure that the apparatus can move throughout the development without hitting cars parked on the sides and, um, get around all corners without hitting any obstructions or going over sidewalks or any curbs. So, um, I think we're almost there. Um, we just have a little more work to do to make sure we're getting there, but they are complying and they are working with us on that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jeong?
Yeah, and this is for, uh, to address traffic as well. And I know the city has done their due diligence in addressing traffic and done the studies and that the applicant has met those requirements set forth by the city. Um, however, growing up in the area and now living in the area, I do know that Lowell is a busy area, particularly in the morning. And then you have Flynn Elementary, you have Shaw Heights, uh, you have the Crown Academy across Federal, and then you have the W Academy School. Um, in the off-chance, um, if traffic does increase in this area, will the city conduct another traffic analysis?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, if, if we do notice, because we are expecting that Lowell traffic will increase. And yes, it, it has, carries quite a bit of volume currently and there will be new traffic that is added to it. So if there becomes a particular intersection that starts to get overloaded, then we will do a, a signal warrant analysis for that, typically based on requests or observations from transportation engineering.
So how often do those transfer engineers, um, do site visits to that area? Or what caused, what triggers it? And then is there an appointment by the city for them to do those site visits?
It would be, uh, typically it's at request. So if we think of, you know, Lowell Boulevard and the existing access points, there's quite a few other subdivisions that front arterial roadways. Think of Ninety-second Avenue, um, between Lowell and Sheridan, where they're still unsignalized and there's still quite a few left turns that it just doesn't meet that warrant. But if we do notice that there is an increase in the queues at, from, due to Eighty-Eighth Avenue being signaledized and/or Eighty-Fourth Avenue signaledized, and now we're starting to consistently impact the other ones, then we will take a look at that. We don't have a set pattern. Uh, we don't look at all of our unsignalized intersections throughout the city and set a time to go and study that.
May I ask why not?
Because there's, uh, quite a few of those. And to do the studies, it does cost, uh, funding. And right now, we have been putting that funding at, uh, other locations to improve, uh, lighting and/or crosswalks and that kind of stuff. But it doesn't prevent us from that. That is why, and anybody listening, you know, we do always ask our residents to, if they have a question and want us to evaluate a, a signal or a, a need for a signal at an intersection, please reach out to the city and report that, and we will look into it.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek?
So this could be answered by either staff or the developers. The, having no on-street parking and having, uh, some challenging, uh, fire apparatus access, and I say that having driven fire trucks in my past. Um, we had basically the same arguments you guys are making for Bradburn Village, uh, when it was built, a few of the other new urbanist-type developments in the past. When you couple that with, um, complaints from across the city of there being more cars than are, are assumed in parking evaluations and traffic studies, actually at the houses. For the city, who's going to enforce parking? And perhaps for the developers, are you going to empower your HOA to keep the cars off the streets?
Keith Klein again. So the city does now have a parking enforcement team. And so that was, would be the first way to enforce parking. Our PD still has the powers as well if, if needed to get involved. But we would not encourage, we, the HOA does not have power on public's right-of-way to move vehicles along. That makes sense. Thank you.
Sir, I'm happy to just add to that. You're right on the public right-of-way, obviously, our HOA wouldn't have enforcement, right? I do want to acknowledge there would be a sub HOA for this neighborhood. That was a question that was asked earlier. There would be one, and yes, just the neighborhood would be subject to the metro district. Um, so we, we understand that, so sir, we would work through that. The only thing I would note, and it goes to the comment about transitioning and buffering to the existing Shaw Heights neighborhood, been very thoughtful about the homes that buffer in front Lowell. Those are paired homes that act like a very large home, right? That really matches what's across the street. And that internal density, sir, to your question, works so closely with that, the fire department. Again, you're seeing here a neighborhood that's at nine dwelling units per acre, right? Where T-Mon's at eighteen. And I think really starting to try to push that density into the site, right? Instead of on those edges and working through that. So sir, I think we, we feel very comfortable with it. We feel like that's something that we can regulate. And I will just say in the last eight, nine, ten, you could probably cite ten or eleven neighborhoods, right? In Westminster that now have developed under that T-Mon tradition that have been very successful doing that. So we think it's the right trend. We think it's actually a much safer condition. And working so closely with, uh, the fire department and the layout is so important to that as well.
Any more questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Please give us a roll call.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Colling. Yes, Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Jeong?
Yes.
And Chair Boshier.
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I would like to ask if there's any old business that needs to be addressed, either from staff or from commissioners. Okay? Do we have any miscellaneous business? Anybody's got a birthday coming up? No? Okay. Okay. Did you have something? No? Okay. Well, seeing that there's no discussion at this time, I am adjourning this meeting. Thank you for your participation and the staff was very good on this, thank you.